Very interesting. Mr. President.
Order ready, go.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Scottsburg Common Council this September the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We begin by calling our meeting order, that's what we're doing now. Then we begin with prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. If you don't mind, let's all stand, all have the prayer, then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we bow before you this day to praise the name of Yeshua, of Elohim, Father of your spirit and in Moses. We thank you and praise you and praise your name, Father, for the gift of life you've given unto us today. And we all have been able to enjoy a beautiful day out today with a hint of fall in it as we walk the pilgrimage of life. It's just a joy to be with you and to be with, uh, with those who you've made in your language. It's just a joy. We thank you for it. Give us wisdom this evening, Father, and these coming days as you give us life. We pray for understanding, we pray for wisdom, we pray for discernment, and all these things we pray from your presence. We love you and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next thing on our agenda is the roll call by Secretary Jan Hartnett.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hovland.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Jeff Brothers.
Here. Thank you, Jane. Next on the agenda is the approval of the ordinance on August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll take a motion to accept the ordinance presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Rick Mans makes the motion, President, Council? Is there a second?
No second.
We should have a second to make questions, comments about it. Hearing none, diverse say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can ask. Thank you very much. The next thing is our public hearing budget on two thousand twenty-four. We will open our public hearing. If you have questions, comments, concerns about the budget, please speak now. Going once, going twice, going three times. Hearing none, we'll close the meeting with nobody commenting on the two thousand twenty-four budget. The next thing we have is a public hearing for additional appropriation of the ARP fund. We're going to open this public hearing now for anybody who have comments, questions, or concerns about the additional appropriation ARP fund. Come forward and speak. Going once, going twice, going three times. We will close the public hearing for the additional appropriation ARP fund. Going next is the public hearing for adoption of preliminary tax payment resolution. Open this hearing for public hearing. Please come forward and state your name and what your concerns are. Going once, going twice. Is this, is this for public comment?
No.
Okay.
No, we're at the tax payment.
Okay.
Then they're, then they're next.
Okay.
We won't, we won't forgive them.
So going once, a preliminary adoption of preliminary tax payment resolution. Going once, going twice, three times we're closed. Ladies and gentlemen, next on our agenda is the public comment section of our agenda. Every, every time we meet, the city, Scott, the Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and to state your name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or local officials. So if you would like to come forward this evening, yeah, please come forward. And address your counsel.
Hello, my name is Sherry Shear. And first off, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Gary and I have a concern. It's a property close to us. I think the mayor's already knows about it, and so does our councilman. But we have a situation where there's a property adjacent to ours. It is a small property. Uh, the lady is wanting to build a house on it. It is, under the requirements of the city ordinance, it should have eight thousand four hundred square feet. This property is only four thousand eight hundred feet, about thirty-six hundred square feet difference. Um, according to the ordinance as well, it says it should have a road frontage of seventy feet. It's only got sixty feet. So those are the two little concerns. The two bigger concerns are that they both coincide with one another in one aspect. She's put a new driveway in, and the way that looks like the driveway, it looks like part of the alley's taken. Presence there too. I'm not saying she did take part of the alley. It just looks like part of the alley has been taken with this potential situation. Which, when I go by and I look at it, if my house was up at the top of the park, that I would think there would be a hard time for city officials to get up there, fire trucks to get up there, because there is a house back behind this property, and it's only accessible by city alley. So they would have to have access to be able to get up there. There's three alleys, but they're tight. One of them's really tight. The other two is the alley that goes from Davis Street to Terrell Street, and it's an alley there. But the part that goes to Terrell Street does look like that part of it has been blocked. The main issue that Gary and I have is drainage, and that's one of the reasons why I'm up here. The drain that is there, or was there, had swayed in the lower part of the property. That sway or swell, whatever you want to call it, when we would get the big rains, it would set in there and slowly drain down and go into the ditch across the street. That drain has been replaced this summer with a box, but it's only an eight-inch drain. And the actual drain that goes into the ditch is only thirteen inches off the bottom of the ditch floor. When she put in her driveway here recently, the pipe that is now there is a fourteen-inch pipe. It's going to be hard for fourteen inches of gushing water to come through, going down into that eight-inch pipe. So therefore, our comment and our concern is, since she's taken ten, fifteen feet across and made it up two and a half feet taller than what the swell is, that prop, that water's going to come more onto her property, but more onto our property, causing us to have a lot of water onto our property that we really don't want. We would like to find a way of maybe seeing if there is any way we can have that ditch or a new drain or something to help ease all that water that's going to come onto our property because of the, the fact that she's taken so much of the swell out. If you drive by and look at it, you'll see is the actual property used to be ten, seventy-five Terrell Street. Now it's divided into two properties. The lower property is seventy-seven Terrell. And you can see what she's done with the drive and how it works. I just don't want us to have a lot of damage on our property. And I know that since twenty fifteen, we've had three huge rains come in where the water gets built up so much that it just can't handle with that little eight-inch tight drain that goes from this side of Terrell Street to the other side of Terrell Street. There's just not enough to push it on into the, the ditch. You know, if there's any way that somebody could take a look at it and try and figure it out and help us so that we don't incur a lot of damage onto our property, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
That's right. Mary, you got anything as well?
Oh, no, just what she said all there. The only thing is, it's not your decision, but the variance that is put in on this property is well in excess of what normal in our ordinances. So if it is approved, it's going to set a precedence for the city. If anybody else wants to put in stuff that is not where close to city ordinances, if this gets approved, uh, they may have a leg to stand on against other people wanting the same thing if it does get approved. And it's way, when you go three thousand six hundred and three square feet that you put in a variance for, to me, that's a lot, you know? So something about there too.
Thank you, Abby.
Well, the, uh, I've noticed that where she dug the ditch across the alley, you can no longer drive up the alley. Because the, before you could drive up the alley, but now there's about a two, um, two or three-foot drop-off. So your car, you can get your front wheels in, but you won't be able to get the rest of your vehicle in. Where they, where they took out the, there was a white drain pipe underneath there. They cut it into and took out the white drain pipe on both sides of where the driveway is now. And, and then they, they took the drain pipes away after they cut it into. They took them away. But, uh, you can't, can't drive up the alley.
Thank you. Let me get, make sure that all the council's knowledgeable the exact location of this property. This property is located on South Main Street at Terrell. Right there, Terrell, we have the, at Blankenbaker Property, right there on that. And this property is just east of that property. And, and, uh, the Bushes have that house that's, that's right next to that property in a garage. And then they live in a house that's on South First Street. So, uh, and this, that lot was purchased, and then there was a, there was a building up to that lot. As you go up an alley, if you, if, as soon as you go past Terrell, you can turn in the alley and it kind of, you know, it kind of makes a, over to the next street, which is, uh, whatever the street is. Terrell, it's not Terrell, but it's
Davis.
Davis Street, over to Davis Street. So she's, she's, she made that building into a house, and I think sold that. I don't think she lives there, does she? So this is the same person? Same person. So she sold that house. And now she just sold this lot to another lady who's wanting to build a property there. Now, as far as I know, I know at the mayor's office, we've not received any type of question as far as, can we go ahead and put, you know, the driveway in there and, and put a tile? Maybe she's going to the carmine. I don't know, but we were not knowledgeable in any way. But we have, just give you FYI, we did bring, I was over there and dismissed you guys, but we did bring our heritage engineering, which is our store water engineering company. And they are looking at all of that as to, to see, is this going to work? Is it not going to work? And, and, uh, and so I will get you that information. I'll get council that information as well.
You did that what?
I said, I, we had, we had, we have had the, I took the engineer, Rami Rafi.
At the end of it.
Yeah. I said, as soon as I get that information from him, then I will contact the Bushes. I will contact council as well and bring you up to date.
Now, I got a question with Mr. Mayor. Who put the box in for the drain?
The city, the city actually put the box in, but it, this was before she did it. This is both
That was before the driveway was in?
Yes, sir.
So, so we did that because we thought that would alleviate the previous one?
There were, there was, yeah, there was issues there, and so we went in.
Just trying to get the order, the, the dates in mind.
Okay.
Sure. Well, the reason the box was put in is there was no box there to begin with.
Okay.
Previous owner, when they would mow, they filled the pipe full of grass continuously. So when we was coming up here, concerned about was having the grass fill the pipe, which would not let it drain.
Right.
Then that's when the city did come down and put the box in and put a nice cover over it where it can drain. That's where the box come all about.
Okay.
All right. And all of this that Sherry has stated, this all come about now, I'll just tell you. Yep, I'm the oldest living resident down there in that, in the town that has stayed there their entire life. So you want to know something about down there on First Street, Terrell Street, in that area? I've been there for over sixty-three years. So if you want to know something about that in there, I think I got some residence down.
Has a permit been issued or been tabled for this? This is an area plan, area plan, I think it went before the
It's a prior plan.
zoning.
OBDA.
OBDA, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, it's a prior planning. It didn't come before us. It's, uh, I think it's
It was on the zoning board.
Yeah, they want a, they're wanting a, a, a variance, so we go to the zoning appeals.
It's on there for Monday night, isn't that accurate?
That's Monday?
Yes, Monday night.
So nothing can be done to that property until that has been done? That's correct. And who gave the order to put the electric meter? There is a water meter pinned down there also, here.
It goes to the seventy-five Terrell Street.
Yeah, the actual water meter that's on that property, Terry, also goes to the house that's on the other property back behind it.
I see. Okay, so it goes there existing. It's got electric meter there and a light pole there already.
Yeah.
Who gave that to her? I mean,
I don't know.
Do they have that, to have some kind of permit for property like that to do that? I mean, you have a lot of your order of light pole and the light. Light meter, whatever, telephone, I mean, light pole and light meter has, what's the requirements for that? Does, don't you have to have a permit to do that? I think they pay for it themselves.
That's what Mother did. She lived on South Garth.
I think it's just
Her Shirley Amy split the lights all one. To have a, a, a meter.
Yeah.
It's got a, it's got a meter box there. It's on the pole. I, I, I went down, looked at it. It was there when I was there. I saw it where they put it. I'm assuming that they, they paid for the pole themselves and put it in. But I can find, how can you do that without a permit? If you don't have a building permit there, what need do you have a electric meter? For the, just for the light itself?
For the light, you don't, not the light pole.
I don't know what caused me to ask this property. I'm not interested to speak to what's going on with this particular property. Permitting wise, there, I've seen it or, yeah.
I think our main concern, Terry, is just for people to know.
Right.
And to make sure that, you know, we've been lucky this summer. We have not had any of the torrential rains.
Right.
So I, I think from our standpoint, you know, we're trying to make sure that things are done so that we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
Understanding that, you know, when you get up, we may not have a choice depending on how bad the rains are. But if there's any way to fix the drain and make sure that with all the water that's coming down her hill and through the pipes and everything, coming off the, the ditch line and everything else, then, you know, fourteen inches of water coming through that big pipe, it's going to take a while for that to go through that little eight-inch drain. So, and I just think, you know, it's something we're concerned about, and as I said, we don't want any damage on our property.
We will certainly share with you the, the engineer's report.
Thank you.
So no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and addressing this stuff.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, please.
More questions?
Since I'm on the board of zoning appeals, Mark Wilson. This property, between Gary's property and the property on the west side of the corner of Main and Terrell, this property sits one, two feet, three feet lower in the front part of it, in the ditch area.
Where they put their gravel and drive in, and they raised it two and a half feet.
From the bottom of this well, uh, yeah.
But this lady, she didn't want to put a mini house on this property, which was originally around five hundred thirty square feet. And a couple of people on the board of zoning appeals had encouraged her to raise the footage of the house by making it a two-story to get close to what the ordinance is of nine hundred fifty square feet. But basically, she wanted to put a mini house on there, and who went up the hill with it to get away from the water area. But she did cut off the alleyway. Whoever, she said Rose.
Yeah. Yeah, Rose. Excavators.
That, some, like the excavator company, Rose, took out the entrance to the alley and moved her driveway over about six feet, so the alley can be cut off. So now we got a drain pipe there, fourteen drain pipe, and then it turned into dirt and kind of curved in the sides, a little bit, haked in the sides. But we got a meeting this, kind of Monday night, but to take a city ordinance and basically snap it in half. I just can't see it. Myself and I got another personal on the board of zoning appeals that's not for it. The other couple of people were kind of up and down, so I'm not sure. But she didn't want to put a mini house on it. And light pole marks spot, so just to clarify a little bit what was going on with this property.
And then also, they've already taken the city alley, you're saying, Mark?
Yeah, the city alley can be cut off. She just moved, cut that out, put her driveway about six feet away. So there's no access to the alley, but she goes with her drive and take a little bit of curve.
So if, if someone parked in that drive, would it lock the alley?
Probably. Yeah, yeah, a lot of people like that. I've been talking
I drove by the other day, but I didn't really look for the driveway.
Yeah. Where the alleyway was, it's basically a ditch now.
Correct.
There's no access to that alley unless you cross the
I saw where they raised it.
Unless you cross the driveway, there's no alley.
Didn't realize that's a city alley.
Yeah. Actually, she wants to put this mini house on it. And, you know, I just think she paid something four hundred, or sorry, first house, eight hundred square feet from a four hundred square feet.
You have the lot inside.
Yeah, but then your house square footage, you know, is basically breaking this ordinance and hash.
Right.
And I just can't see that. That's my opinion. I just want to clarify that, please.
Appreciate it, Mark. Cheers, Mark.
Bill, Bill, I wanted to contact Carmen, because I knew she would know about the permit. Anyone that wants to can go into the utility office, and they request a permit for the utility pole. Then the utility office sends out a work order, and the electric department goes and puts up the pole. So anyone that owns property in the city can come in and ask her for the permit.
So I could put all kinds of light poles around my property?
They go into the utility office and request it. That's the process as of right now.
But okay, if they aren't going to do anything there, why put a pole there?
Well, they're trying to do something.
That's what I'm saying.
It'll have to be decided.
Yeah, if there's no other reason, there's, I wouldn't have a need to put six poles or one pole additional at on my property. I don't need it unless I was going to do something with it. If I was going to put a tiny home on the parking lot.
Yeah.
I couldn't do it.
And we have changed the process.
That's right. And there's no need for a light pole there if there's going to be anything there. Okay, anything else? Okay. Thank you, folks, so very much for coming here and being part of the city council.
Thanks for allowing us to speak.
Absolutely appreciate it. Absolutely. This is, this is Mayor, I'll Uh, going forward on new business, the next thing we have is the first reading ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-four. That is our two thousand twenty-four budget. And, uh, do we have a motion to pass, uh, the budget, ordinance twenty, twenty-three to twenty-two on first read?
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motion, is her second?
I'll say it.
Christian Evans, second, set? Any questions, comments, concerns?
The only comment I want to make, and I appreciate the work you and Tish and your folks have done, but the process was pretty smooth again this year.
It was, it was smooth, and I think the department heads appreciated the meetings again, and yes.
I think it's beneficial to all of us, but thank you for the
I appreciate your all's input and being so easy to work with. Just to make it be able to work.
That's a nice idea to give a paper copy.
Well, and that's what I thought, yes.
I picked it up this morning, and I'm on my way to my wife's trip, and it was a
See, we look at it, and I think what I provided to council, it, um, you probably, that's the one I think that you've said years past in life, that singular things were flying.
Self-oriented, good, thank you.
I want to echo with Jan too. Thank you for counseling. This is, you guys have done a great job. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can ask. Thank you very much for passing ordinance twenty, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Yeah, this is just the first reading, and then at our next meeting, we will do both second and third. We have to adopt it as advertised, and with my head, so yes, we're good. Thank you for asking.
Next thing I have to this evening is to close Bond Street from Green Street, from Green to Railroad on ten fourteen. And Jill, what's this for?
Uh, we need to close that for the Fall Fun Fest.
Okay, for Fall Fun Fest, okay.
We did it last year, just for the safety of them crossing the road.
Right, 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 right. So we have the Fall Fun Fest on October the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, so we would like your permission to close Green Street to the railroad.
What, what hours does that come up, Terry?
Basically, to get about nine AM, don't we?
Yeah, and then we show a movie.
Show a movie, so
So basically, all of it on a Saturday, so
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, how many movies over the last two years, probably?
About nine thirty.
Nine thirty, ten, right. So, uh, is there a motion to go forward and close Bond Street on, uh, on October the fourteenth for the Fall Fun Fest? Christian Evans makes a motion, is her second?
I'll say it.
Chris Edwards, a second. Any questions, comments, concerns about this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can ask. Thank you very much. The next thing we have is Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash R dash eleven. This is a resolution of many plan detailing, uh, resolution of many plan detailing the use of the funding provided with the American Rescue Plan Act to support the city of Scottsburg's recovery from COVID-nineteen pandemic. Accept a motion to go, to pass this, Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash R dash eleven. I'll make that motion. Rick Mans makes the motion, is her second?
I'll say it.
Christian Evans, second, set? Questions, comments, concerns about this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can ask. Thank you so much. The next thing is the first reading ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three. Ordinance to appropriate from the ARP coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for the purposes that fulfill the intent of the amended American Rescue Plan Act in aid of the city of Scottsburg's recovery from the effects of COVID-nineteen emergency. So we'd entertain a motion to pass ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three on first read? Christian Evans makes a motion, is her second?
I'll say it.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can ask. Thank you very much.
We have all three readings tonight, John. And so if we might move, we suspend the rules and have second, third reading by title.
Chuck Rose makes the motion to suspend the rules and pass the second, third reading, is our motion? We've got that motion, is her second to the motion?
I'll say it.
Chris Edwards, a second. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass it, we go forward. Now for a, a call to bring this to second and third reading by title.
I'll make a motion if we approve this ordinance by title, second, third reading by title.
Remains makes the motion of twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three to pass a whole second before by title, is her second?
I'll say it.
Christian Evans, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns about this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can ask. Thank you very much. Or does twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three passes on all three readings? Thank you very much. Announcements, what announcements do we have for the evening?
A reminder that the next council meeting prior to that, we have a public workshop for zoning ordinance.
For the new zoning ordinance?
For the new zoning ordinance.
And that's a public
Public workshop, yes.
At what time?
Three thirty, yes.
Three thirty, about?
Three thirty.
That's one date? The next, uh, council meeting?
Twenty-five.
I think it's been advertised, right?
Yes, exactly. Thank you for that. What other announcements do we have? Chief, what's going on in Scottsburg PD these days?
I just want the council to know that this morning that the board of works hired Robert Dutchland. He's a, been a veteran officer in Austin for a while. And it did have a lot to do with, with you helped us with longevity earlier this year. He was definitely interested in that, so hopefully in a few
He was definitely interested in that, so hopefully in the future that will, will help. I appreciate that. Chief, does this fill all vacancies in your department, sir? Yes. Okay, that's the Phil Scott position, and we're, we're full at this time, so. Anybody have questions for Chief Hardy? Jill, Amy, you got anything? Yep, okay. Hardy? Okay. So, council getting to the next? Okay. Thank you for
I'll adjourn.